As you all notice, we are getting a little busier in the hospital. You know, knock on wood, right now it's not all COVID, but we're definitely very busy and we are seeing some upticks in the community. So eventually those COVID cases will start to hit the hospital. Just wanted to let you all know that we appreciate everything you're doing and appreciate the fact that you're following our PPE guidelines and making sure we're creating a safe environment for every caregiver as well as all of our patients. I'm going to go ahead and have John walk through the presentation. There's a lot of updates in here, a lot of COVID data slides. But feel free at the end, while we're going through this, please enter any questions into the chat window and we will address them at the end. So, all right, John, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Welcome, everyone, and thanks again for joining. I apologize about the change in invites. I had my Webex account get updated and that caused me some, it caused me to recreate all the current Webex meetings. So sorry and thanks for your patience. So first off, we're going to start with some great news and many of you may have saw this, but Marlboro Hospital was voted best hospital by the Metro West Daily News. This came out last week, so this is really terrific news. Congratulations to all of you and everyone that went out there and voted as well. So great news, another great, great reason then, you know, to work here and certainly makes me proud and I hope does the same for you. We continue to get great catches. We have a couple here and I'll just kind of highlight them all because as Steve said, we do have a fair amount of slides, so I don't want to spend the entire time talking. But, you know, we continue to get these and these are around, you know, medications. The first one was medications that are close to each other that have been very similar that possibly could have been confused and the wrong vaccine could have been given. The next one was about reviews and discharge instructions and noticed that there was an order for an MRI placed for, you know, for 50 years from now. So once again, an error and a great catch and thank you for those and particularly thank you for your continued support of keeping patients safe. So hospital update. As Steve said, there's a fair amount of COVID slides in the beginning and actually I just updated it this morning because I felt that I just needed to add a little bit more about this. And as much as I would rather not be talking about COVID, I do feel that, you know, we need to kind of start really kind of paying attention, gain the focus that we had, you know, six months ago around COVID to make sure that we're prepared and understand what our current environment is and how we need to prepare and be ready as needed. So this is, once again, this is the daily dashboard that's published by the Department of Public Health every day around four, four thirty. You could certainly welcome to go in yourself and take a look. There's about 25 slides that come out every day with a variety of topics. I'm going to go through it just quickly here. New reported confirmed cases was 2495 and this is obviously very high. This was for yesterday. Then there's some testing information. The total average daily seven day rate is 2.88. They're estimating 25,000, you know, approximately active cases. This is the most important line to me as it looks at hospitalizations throughout the state as well as confirmed patients in the ICU and intubated. And then the last one is kind of, you know, deaths, which is clearly a lagging indicator around this. As we know, the average age of death and then turnaround time. This is a new column they added on the right and this shows you the percentage of folks or the number of folks that are testing positive. And certainly, as we've all talked about, we continue to have an increase in COVID cases. But as you can see right here by the data that, you know, in the last, from 1025 to 1107, that the age groups are significantly younger that are getting COVID, which right now is just, which is why our hospitalization rate has been lower and is, but is increasing as, you know, as we continue to have folks get infected, they do bring it on to the older folks and even some of the younger folks do need hospitalization. This is the slide that we've all seen hundreds of times at this point. Goes over the same with some of the stuff, but this is, you know, a very quick snapshot, same as data that was on the previous slide, but just gives you the graph. But the purpose of this slide is really to see kind of how everything is upward trending. And once again, you know, important to look at and pay attention. So I put in this slide because everyone says, oh, you know, we may have forgotten where we were, you know, several months ago. We remember how bad it was, but we might not be able to kind of correlate the numbers to what it is. So this is daily confirmed cases of COVID. So confirmed cases by date and you can see back in here in May, April and May, at times we were pushing, you know, 3,000 cases a day. So having a big number yesterday of 2,500 is a significant day. Clearly we're not there yet, but it shows you that we have, you know, we did fine for several months, but we really are seeing a significant increase in the amount of COVID cases. Doesn't matter what you read or what you believe. These are the actual numbers that are getting reported by our state and so we have to be cognizant of this and have to make sure that we're very careful about what we're doing at work, but also outside of work. And I will talk about that a little bit more as we continue through this conversation. And daily confirmed hospitalizations. So just to kind of put this in perspective, yes, once again, we are seeing lots of infections, but this was the hospitalizations, you know. You know, we're pushing, you know, 4,000, 3,500 to 4,000 hospitalizations in the state back in May. So we are in a significantly better place. But as you can see, you know, we dropped off and then we really did very well for several months. And now we continue, we're continually seeing kind of this gradual incline, particularly as we've entered November, which is something we're all going to take very close attention to and really starting the next steps in preparation. And what does this mean if this keeps, you know, the upward trend? And what are we going to have to do to prepare? And, you know, what are, what we're going to do at the hospital? Just to kind of look at the micro level of this, this is a chart that we have on our website that we can look up every day to see where we are. It's done for each hospital and as a system. This one right here is the Marlboro slide. And this is a kind of a footnote. This presentation and all the slides will be mailed out to you after we're done talking today. So you'll be able to look at it a little bit more, you know, under your own case if you have, if you have any interest. But Marlboro, we've been, we've been fairly fortunate right now with our COVID, you know, COVID admissions. You know, gray is all patients, orange is ICU patients. So as you can notice, you know, today we have a total of four patients, two in med surg and two in the ICU. But Health Alliance, the Medical Center, they're certainly seeing more patients than we are. So overall, we're fortunate right now. A lot of our patients were in the previous surge from the local nursing homes. And I think, you know, the local nursing homes are currently doing a very good job keeping their residents safe. So that's a huge focus and not just keeping the residents safe, but also the vulnerable patient population that's out there that lives at home or assisted living in other places. So overall, good news, you know, at Marlboro Hospital currently. But, you know, our number has definitely gone up a little bit. And this is the one that we look at for the system. So all summer long, this number was hovering right around 10 or so. And over the last, you know, four to six weeks, it's taken a significant turn upwards. And, you know, now we're at, now we're at 53 med surg patients in the system and 18 patients in the ICUs. So certainly these are, you know, as I said, these are just, this is just the truth. These are the numbers. These are the patients that are walking around as well as the patients that are in the, the patients with COVID that are in the hospital. What I want to talk a little bit about is some of the work we're doing around COVID. And we, we, as I mentioned before, we started doing stop the spread testing back in July, which is a state funded program. And when we started doing this, we thought we were really busy when we were doing about 200 tests a day. We, you know, you know, even when we first started, we had 100 patients a day, 100 COVID tests a day. We were, we were pretty proud of ourselves. But as this has kind of continued to grow and our work around stop the spread and kind of perfecting the tested method and getting patients through a system has, has really improved for us. We're able to test a lot more people. And that's thanks to the ability of working with the state through Stop the Spread and the, and the city of Marlboro and the Broad Institute, which is, you know, the lab at MIT. And we're set up at New England Sports Center and we were, when I, we did this presentation last week, parts of it, we were testing around 400 people a day. This week we've tested 500 people on average, you know, 500 people for the last three days. So the numbers keep going up and we're, we're, for kind of our current setup, we're maxed out at about 500 people a day. It's, you know, it's a tremendous amount of work. The folks down there working the testing tent, the lab, the additional resources that, that we brought in are doing a great job keeping up with this. But it is, it's a lot of hard work. It starts early and they go on and on because we don't, we don't close the gate until 12. So no matter how many people are in line, we test them. So it's, it's, it's great because it allows lots of people to get tested, allows people to get back to work, get to school. There's a lot of people that are sent for kind of contract tracing, as well as kind of testing to make sure they're not infectious and they can't go to work. They can't go to school. They can't go to sports without this getting done. So it is a very valuable service to the community and to the, to the folks around. So I'm, I'm happy that we're able to provide it. About 30% of the people that show up there are from Marlboro and Hudson. So there is a huge part of, you know, right in our primary service area that come. And there's lots of other folks from our service area that come here as well. We do get people from further away in the state. And one of the things we hear around that is because we're able to provide a turnaround time in approximately 24 hours. There's still lots of places that are testing that take three, four days. And if you're out of work for three or four days waiting for a negative test, you know, that's, that's just very difficult for people and lots of people just can't afford that. So it's a great service and if anyone's ever looking to help out, let us know. We're, we're continuing to looking for folks down there, particularly as, as, as we're going to be doing this through at least January 15th. As well as that, we continue pre-procedural testing here at the hospital. We also have some MyChart appointments now where we're going to be doing kind of symptomatic patients that can set up appointments that are sent from our physician's office. The goal is not to have those patients enter the hospital to wait out, you know, to, you know, set up in MyChart, to arrive, call it to the lab and then we'll, we'll be going out there to get their, their tests from them. So they're not coming into the hospital exposing staff. And Kathleen is working on an algorithm, a chart for that to be kind of distributed. So lots of great work around COVID testing. I'm grateful for everyone's work around that. Last week on November 3rd, the Department of Public Health has put out some new guidance and some tier planning around how to plan for the, you know, the potential next wave of COVID hospitalizations. So Annette Casco is leading that for us and as well as, you know, the work with the Medical Center. It's every hospital has to be doing this, but it's a, it's a four tier system, tier one through four. Tier one is basically normal operations under COVID and tier four is, you're, you know, you're very stressed and they're going to restrict services. So what we're required to do is look at that, look at what's happening in our region as well as to, as create a workflow plan for what we're going to do in each tier. At tier four, you start losing some options and the state starts mandating things get shut down. So it's really tier two and tier three that we do control some, some of the planning around this. So more to come and that's certainly things we can share with folks as it gets developed. This is a COVID recovery dashboard. We've been getting it for, you know, since, since we kind of researched, we, since we started opening things back up in June. And not going to go over all of it, but it shows, you know, kind of pre-COVID, what happened during COVID and then kind of the current weeks. So, you know, the last week was Halloween here that I had. And it shows kind of inpatient discharges and admissions and surgical cases. Overall, kind of the big things that we're taking a hit with are emergency department. As you can see that, you know, pre-COVID, we were seeing about 520, 20ish people a day in the emergency department. And this number has been pretty steady since then. So we're still seeing about a 20% decrease in our emergency department volume. And that is a, that is a significant hit to us. A lot of that happens to be pediatric patients. The pediatric emergency is not behavioral health. So, you know, there's been a little bit of uptick in it, but it's something that has gone away and this is a, is a common threat amongst the other UMass hospitals as well. And the other piece is endoscopy. We're continuing to, you know, not be as busy as we previously have been in endoscopy. We have run in some new UMass GI physicians to help work at the South Borough and just start seeing patients here with Dr. Kearns retiring. So I feel confident that this number will actually exceed, you know, kind of pre-COVID numbers. And we're going to have a, see some great work with endoscopy. But overall, the operating room's doing well. They've really been able to catch up with cases overall and as well as the other outpatient areas. Quick change of gears here is the hospital quality goals. And these were for fiscal year 20. As we're preparing for 21, the goals are pretty much identical to what they were for, for in 21 that they were in 20. The one addition to it will be that we're going to have an equity goal. So that's coming. But overall, you can see where we are for, you know, for each month as well as kind of year to date and what our target was. The PSI 90 I'll talk about quickly about is because the previous year we had, you know, here it says four, four incidents. This year we only had one. So this number, the way it's calculated is a little bit difficult. So that's, that's being looked at. But overall, lots of great work by everyone around patient harm events, work around like the stay, particularly around willingness to recommend the hospital. I have a few slides that we'll dive into that on just to give you a little bit more view. But I just wanted to make sure everyone saw this and, and understands that we still are paying attention to all of our quality work and I'm grateful for, for all the good work that's happened over the last year. Falls. This is something I, you know, I worry about and we've had a lot of patient falls the last couple of years. Just in October, we had a patient with a, that fell in the emergency department and fractured her hip. So it's something that we never want to have happen. So I can't ask everyone enough to be, you know, really cognizant of patients and making sure that we're keeping a great eye on them, that we're getting call lights or we're making sure that they're getting help. The fall that happened in the emergency department was, you know, we did an SRE on it. It was determined that it was unavoidable. The lady, it was an elderly lady that was in the bathroom that wanted to use the commode in the room. And she was told, you know, to kind of give us a holler when you're ready or hit the call it when you come out. She didn't, she, she didn't want any help and unfortunately she ended up slipping and falling and fracturing her hip. So she was transferred out of the hospitals by, by her family choice. But all the same, a very unfortunate event for, for everyone involved. Just a few patient experience slides. So don't look really October because of the number so small. We don't really, we didn't have that many surveys back yet. But overall, you can see fairly good, fairly consistent and good work in patient experience. So this has been a lot of work by a lot of folks over time and we've, you know, we've continued to see improvement year over year. And, you know, I'll be excited when COVID is behind us and we're able to focus on some of the great work and some of the things that we were doing to the extent that we were prior to COVID. Because certainly it's a distraction, but we're continuing to see good, good patient experience scores. And I just please keep working on it and paying attention. So. Couple, here's one for the emergency department. The emergency department has, you know, several challenges around patient experience. They're doing a lot of work as well down there. So we'll, you know, maybe in the coming months, we can talk a bit more specifically what's happening in the emergency department. But they do have a new, a new behavioral health spot. Along with that, you know, the behavioral health patients are really flowing into the emergency department. And I have a, you know, kind of a couple of bullet points on that that I'll talk about in a minute. But still a lot of challenges with, with the emergency department population. And then surgery, ambulatory surgery. So lots of great scores here. This does include endoscopy and while we saw a little dip for a while, it made some positive changes. I anticipate that'll continue trending upward. So additional updates. So some of these are hot off the press. Crisis documentation, which was used in the previous surge for, you know, nursing documentations, which really decreases the amount of workflow that nurses have to do in documentation, went live again last night, not just here, but also at the other campuses. So if you're, you know, Emory and the other nursing leaders will be out talking about this for the folks that this is impacts. But this will be a huge help to kind of limiting the amount of documentation at times. Behavioral health patients in the emergency department. We have seen a tremendous uptick in them and it's continually been growing. And, you know, at times we're now running our own, you know, we have just about as many behavioral health patients in the ED as we do upstairs at Granger III at times. A lot of them also are at pediatric. We're seeing pediatric patients less than 18 for behavioral health at levels that we've never seen them before. And they're, they're children that actually need inpatient admission, but there's no beds. So they're spending a long time here. So this has become a real burden on the emergency department. And I don't anticipate the behavioral health crisis ending anytime soon for all the reasons that we all know that, you know, there's less activities for them to do. Kids are stuck at home. They have maybe parents at work or maybe, you know, being at home all day or seven days a week isn't the best place for them. There's a lack of resources for them at, that they would have access to if they were at school, whether that's, you know, counseling, food, health services. So there's a, you know, this, you know, not having the kids in school is certainly a huge challenge, I think, for, you know, for the state of Massachusetts as our emergency department is not alone in this, in this fight. We are working with the hospital behavioral medicine to kind of get expedited admission for pediatric patients. And the challenge is that they just, they're so full, they hardly have any turnover. So and everyone's fighting for the beds, but we do have a daily call with them now. Department of Health, a couple of reported events. I mentioned the fall that had to get reported. We also had a metallic violation. And just as a reminder to folks, that anyone who ever shows up to our emergency department cannot be turned away for care. They absolutely 100% have to be seen by a provider. If they show up, you know, someone can refuse to be seen, but we can't ever turn anyone away. So anyone shows up to the emergency department, welcome them in. If they're, you know, if they're, if they want to leave, make sure you're getting a resource nurse and the resource nurse can grab the physician. But we don't want to have anyone leave. This is, you know, something that happened. The DPH was here, they did an investigation and now we're just waiting for the follow-up. And it can be anywhere from a $25,000 fine and other sanctions to just making sure we're following our corrective action plan. So we've put several things in place to make sure this doesn't happen again. And I'm anticipating a, you know, a, the report in the next month or two from CMS. Granger III employees. So as many folks may have heard, there was a small outbreak of Granger III employees with COVID-19. And after doing some, lots of work, should I say, not some, lots of work by net employee health, infectious disease, it was determined that the infections, you know, occurred outside of work. Two of the folks that were infected cohabitate together. Another one had recently seen them outside of work. There were some other things that kind of led to some, you know, kind of high risk. Maybe just mute yourself there. I got it for him. High risk behavior upstairs that, you know, exposed and, you know, a lot of the other employees. So to make sure that we had this under control, we worked closely with employee health, infectious disease here and at the Medical Center and the Department of Public Health, who was worried about, who actually thought they might have to shut us down. So we ended up having to test all the patients, all the staff, getting tested twice and no other, you know, positive infections have come up. But I can't highlight this enough that, you know, in the hospital, you have to be wearing a mask. You have to be wearing an eyewear in any clinical area. And, you know, we've, while we've seen this, you know, a fair increase in employee infections, the infections are coming from people doing things outside of work. And I, it's tough for all of us. We all want to, you know, see our friends, our family, but you've got to keep the group small. And, you know, please, you know, if, you know, wear a mask. If you're, if you can't social distance, do things outside. You know, my, this happens not just here, but at the other, you know, the other hospitals as well. These were all kind of, the breakouts are occurring. And if someone comes to work and they say they don't feel well or, you know, they have a fever, you know, send them home. You can call employee health and send them home. They need to be tested and none of us want to necessarily get COVID tested. We all think, oh, you know, I just, we've all worked through not feeling great. But this is not the year not to be working through not feeling great without making sure that it's getting done through employee health. Lots of people who think they, you know, just have allergies or, or something minor, you know, a day or two later a looser sense of smell. And then it doesn't take much to figure out they're COVID positive. So please, please, please be very careful about this, especially over the coming weeks with the holidays. Regulatory updates. We continue to overdue for our joint commission survey in the lab and the hospital survey period is open. But with the way the current rules are and regarding is a hospital safe? Not having a lot of COVID patients. Marlboro Hospital does not fit into that category. So I find the possibility of the joint commission coming here right now pretty slim. Steve, if you would have talked for a minute? Want me to keep going?
No, that's fine. I can step in a little bit. You know, this one's a new leader in our organization now. You know, it's an opportunity for Greg to step up to a larger organization. So he has not left the EBS department. He's just moved over to Memorial, the Memorial Campus in Worcester. But in replacing him, we actually brought out Aaron Layford with the new director of housekeeping. He's been around for a couple of weeks now and doing some rounding and different things. And we just wanted to welcome him to the organization. He has a lot of experience and we're looking forward to working with him. In addition, you know, we have the Marlboro Hospital Diversity and Inclusion Council. Prior to just this announcement, we wanted to thank Padma for all her efforts leading this group. But in her new role, taking on the, as part of senior leadership and running the quality department in place of Joan, Ron has stepped up, Ron Price, who's our chief compliance officer, stepped up to take over the Marlboro Hospital Diversity and Inclusion Council. And Ron has experience running these councils in other facilities. And we're looking forward to working with him on that as we drive this Diversity and Inclusion Council forward. On top of that, it's not in here, but the system is actually finalizing recruitment process, a recruitment process for a system chief of diversity and inclusion and equity. So that's, that sort of should wrap up over the next week. So that's good news. On the HR side, first and foremost, all of your benefit enrollments are due by tomorrow night at midnight. This is a passive enrollment process. So if you're currently enrolled and do not want to make any changes, you don't have to do anything except if you have an FSA. You will have to go in and do something on the FSA. And then obviously if there are any changes you want to make, please go in and get these done shortly. Because after Friday night, tomorrow night, there's nothing we can do to help you. Performance appraisals are all due on November 23rd. So a lot of people are going through them now and passing them out. And then on top of that is the mandatory flu. Everybody needs to get their flu vaccination completed by December 15th. There are some exemption forms on the hub, but those need review between HR and physicians. So. And this is some general updates with our PPE COVID issues that we're facing. We, even though Marlboro does not have a high COVID population, we do have a high COVID status in our community. So we felt that was important to tighten up our visitor policy. We have moved back to one visitor per day for all patients. We have no visitors for COVID patients or patients under investigation. Clearly anybody who's at risk, we don't want to bring other people in and expose them. We do not allow visitors in the ER unless it's necessary for the care and treatment of the patients, i.e. caregivers, parents for pediatric patients, et cetera. And that applies across to all services in the hospital. But we also have no visits to the outpatient areas. But then we always have exclusions. We have exclusions for end of life visits that we can coordinate with the care team because we want to be compassionate about that and make sure we're following it. On PPE, these are going along with the new state guidelines. And this one is basically the first is masks. Everybody has to wear a mask at all times unless they're in a private office with that private office door closed and there's nobody else in there with them. So that is a strict rule and, and we want everybody to follow that. Mandatory eye protection is going to be required in all clinical areas. I know most people are already wearing those and anytime there is any patient encounters. Great example of this one is tomorrow I'll be doing some rounding with Doug Brown and we'll have to have our glasses on to be in the clinical areas. And then in the cafeteria, you know, there's lots of rumors around this one. Just to clarify it, no, we're not closing the cafeteria. And no, we're not looking to downsize the cafeteria staff. What we are trying to do is eliminate the queuing that happens at lunchtime where we end up with people who are not following the six foot social distancing rule. We are working with Morrison on an app for your phones. You'll be able to preorder your food and prepaid for your food. And those will be a way to speed up the process. Hopefully you'll have a little bit more time at lunch instead of waiting 10 minutes in line. And then, you know, we still want to enforce social distancing in the cafeteria as well as in the break room. So please be aware of that. We will update everybody as that app gets closer and closer to going live. Hopefully it will be sometime next week, but we're awaiting some IT updates to get that done. Innovators of the year. We are not going to have an in-person program for this, but we are going to celebrate this. So clearly if there are any ideas that you want to forward and get in, they have extended the deadline for that by a week. This is a great program. Granger II was the winner a few years ago. And we want to make sure that we're well recognized in this event and that we have enough groups being entered. So if anybody could take a look at the ideas that are out there and write up a submission, we'd appreciate that. You know, I think it's important for us to recognize the staff for all that they're doing. On the Women's Imaging Center. As many of you see, as you can come to the property every day, that beautiful little building out front is very close to being done. I believe this week they moved all the equipment over and they're testing it with the plans of opening 19th, which is great news for us. It's a beautiful building. Unfortunately, we cannot do an open house and bring everybody through mainly due to the social distancing issues as well as getting groups together is not always a good idea. So we are going to do a stage ribbon cutting next week. And then after we get through COVID, we'll coordinate something where we can let the staff in there and take a look and get to see what we're doing over there. But it's a beautiful. and get to see what we're doing over there. But it's a beautiful little opportunity for women's imaging. All right, casting call. I actually looked yesterday and it looked like almost all of the slots for Marlboro were already signed up. I think there might have been one or two left. If you're looking to do this, we're looking for a casting call for people to go in. We are going to be doing a caregiver video and some advertising and brand campaigns. And we're having an outside casting company come in to meet with people. We are following the social distancing guideline. You will wear your mask for the majority of it. You'll only drop your mask for a few seconds. And it's such, they can take a picture and, you know, they're looking for a good wide variety of people with good wide variety personalities to do this. And it's always fun. So if you, if you can sign up, please feel free to do that. You go to the next one, John?
Yep.
All right. Pretty quiet on the chat board today. I haven't seen any questions get entered.
The only question that came up that I saw was regarding the cafeteria, and we, we answered that.
I didn't see that one. I think it was maybe it was sent just to you.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So hearing no questions, we just obviously want to end by saying thank you for everything that everybody's doing. We are getting close to the holiday season. Please be ultra-aggressive and conservative around exposures and chat issues where you may become exposed. Ensuring we have a good, consistent workforce is important, especially as the COVID cases start to increase. So, you know, be very physically aware of where you are and take all precautions at all times. That's, that's what's most important to us is to keep you all safe. And thank you for everything that you're doing. And if anybody would like to volunteer in the COVID tent, please let us know. We are looking for more people to be working that. It's not actually volunteer. It's actually is a paid position, but we need people to sign up and help us out. So.
And there is shelter. You won't, you won't be out in the freezing cold the whole time. You can go inside and warm up.
Yeah, you probably should have signed up the last four or five days.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a great day.